Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Albemarle County School Board, February 13th, 2025, is now back in session. Do we have a motion?
I do, Dr. Akoff. I move that the board certified, I recorded both, that to the best of each board's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting, were heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting.
Do we have a second? Moved by Mr. Page, seconded by Ms. Lee. Ms. Thompson, would you please may call the roll. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Cherry Cuff?
Yes.
So moved. Now let us stand, no, let us do the roll call. Everyone is in different seats tonight, I'm sorry, I'm looking around differently. Dr. McLaughlin, you go first.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Pat McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Planning.
Judy Lee, Rymane District.
Allison Spillman, at-large representative.
Priam Paige, Millau District.
Kate Akoff, Jack Jewitt District.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Leslie Pryor, Rio District.
Matthew Haas, Superintendent.
Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Erin Stone, Assistant School Division Council.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Clerk Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. Thank you. Now let us stand with Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Second. Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Dr. Berlin and Ms. Lee. Announcements, first is, oh, I'm, thank you, let us vote. All those in an agreement of passing tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, it's Spotlight on Education, item 4.1.
Good evening, Chair Akoff, Vice Chair Berlin, members of the school board, Superintendent Haas, and members of the Albemarle County Public Schools community. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing an outstanding student, whose words have inspired many and captured the essence of civic engagement. Ms. Anya Sonosori, an ACPS eighth-grade student from Henley Middle School, was named the grand prize winner of the UVA Equity Center's Voices of Democracy contest, with her powerful and thought-provoking poem, "Democracy and Me." Last fall, the UVA Equity Center and the Karsh Institute of Democracy invited sixth through twelfth grade students from Charlottesville and Albemarle County to reflect on what democracy means in their lives. Anya's poem stood out among all submissions, offering a hopeful vision for the future, captured in these closing lines. "So the future of democracy will be kindness and understanding, being considerate with ample planning, because the future doesn't always have to be scary and mean. In the future of democracy, everyone will be seen." The Equity Center presented Henley Middle School with a copy of Anya's poem, underscoring the contest mission to ensure that all students' voices are heard and that their perspectives on democracy are valued. Teachers across our community use the contest prompts as a learning opportunity, encouraging students to explore the role of democracy in their daily lives. Even those who did not enter the competition found the exercise to be a meaningful and engaging classroom experience. In addition to Anya's remarkable achievement, we are proud to recognize three other ACPS students who received honorable mention. Emerson Joy, or AJ Wright, Jackson P. Burley Middle School, grade eight; Haleel Stini, Journey Middle School, grade eight; and Max Harris, Western Albemarle High School, grade nine. This contest, along with the soon-to-open Karsh Institute of Democracy, serves as a reminder that civic engagement begins with young voices. Their reflections and aspirations for democracy challenge us all to envision a future that is inclusive, compassionate, and just. Please join me in congratulating Anya and our honorable mention recipients for their dedication to both writing and democracy.
And feel free to address us.
Yeah, okay. So do you mind if I read my poem?
I would love it.
Okay. So it's called "Democracy and Me." "I come home at four from a seven-hour day, drained, tired, just trying to stay awake. I open my front door, and the first thing I perceive are the voices of the people from the news in my TV. They're talking about the election, as they have been for months. However, this time, I decide to listen in for once. I hear about the voting. I'm reminded of the process, where the people choose the president that will help make the most progress. And that late night, as I lay in bed, I thought about what Lincoln had said, as he described our government in ten words that were simple: 'Government of the people, by the people, for the people.'" It is only one powerful word that he defined. It was democracy, and I couldn't get it out of my mind. It's democracy that's given me some of my basic liberties of expression, of opinion, of religion, and speech. I think about the past and the present of democracy, but when it comes to the future to determine, it's not easy. The future resembles dough, messy and unpredictable. Sometimes, when working with it, you'd have to be philosophical. But I see the future of democracy as something that is in our hands. It is us, and only us, that have to protect our land. Because if within democracy, demos means people and kritos means power, then it is us, the people, who have the power. In the face of the future, we mustn't cower. So the future of democracy will be kindness and understanding, being considerate with ample planning, because the future doesn't always have to be scary and mean. In the future of democracy, everyone will be seen."
Bravo. Anya, have you written other poetry, or was this a special endeavor?
Well, I enjoy reading poetry a lot, but I haven't written too much poetry, so this was pretty special, yeah.
I feel like we're gonna see you at an inauguration someday. It made me cry, that was amazing. Well done.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Well, I think we had a couple, were you gonna say something?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I thought you were going to say something.
Oh, no.
Okay. We would love to, oh.
Anya. Can I, so I'm Rick Verhoeback, Principal Henley, and this is Crystal Beasley, one of our assistant principals. I think we both would like to share a word about Anya. She is an incredible young lady, and when you think about what she wrote, when you think about what she, I'm sorry, I have that outside voice, I just thought it was scaring me. But when you think about what she put down on paper, and she calls it a poem, but it's really just her heart talking. I mean, you think about, she used Abraham Lincoln's "of the people, by the people, for the people," but she talked about a democracy that is about kindness and about understanding. She's gonna be a leader one day. She will be in an inauguration one day, but she's gonna be a leader of our country somewhere. She's a great leader at Henley, and we're super proud of her.
Good evening, good to see everyone. Anya is our model student, right? She's that student that is confident. She's kind and compassionate. She is not afraid to step outside of her comfort zone and try whatever is asked of her. She's always smiling, she's always willing to help. She is our model student at Henley, so this, I thank you all for giving her the opportunity to share her poem, but she is definitely going to be famous one day. I have a signed copy of this, so I told her, "I need for you to sign this, because when you're like famous, you're rich and famous," I'm gonna say, "Look, she was our student." So we have also asked if she would like to share her poem with us, with everyone, for our eighth-grade Step Up Ceremony, so we're looking forward to that.
Outstanding. Thank you all so much. Anya, could you come up? We'd love to shake your hand.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Nice.
Thank you so much.
The poem was great, it was so very poised. Again, thank all of you. Next on our agenda is School Board Superintendent Business. We have a few things to read. Who has school counseling?
I do. Okay, I have a proclamation recognizing National School Counseling Week. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as their traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help families focus on ways to further the academic careers and social, emotional development of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albemarle County School Board do hereby proclaim February 3rd through the 7th as National School Counseling Week, and it's signed by our Chair, Kate Akoff.
Thank you. And we have one on transportation.
Wish I had my little tech school bus right now. Proclamation recognizing February as Love the Bus Month. Whereas the yellow school bus is among the most recognized icons of American schools in society, and whereas school buses make up the largest mass transit system in the U.S., and whereas research demonstrates that the yellow school bus is the safest mode of transportation for some 26 million American schoolchildren each day, and whereas yellow school buses are built to federal and state safety specifications and drivers are provided with rigorous training, preparation, and testing to ensure the safety of students, and whereas the yellow school bus provides access to education and learning for children who live in rural, suburban, and urban areas, including children with delays and disabilities. Whereas the yellow school bus enhances the educational experience by providing access to extracurricular activities, such as field trips and sporting events, and whereas the staff who manage and operate local school transportation systems are dedicated to the safety of all children and to ensuring efficiency and accountability in student transportation. Whereas the Albemarle County Public Schools recognizes the vital role that the yellow school bus and its operators play in our education enterprise and in the life of our district, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albemarle County School Board declares the month of February as Love the Bus Month in Albemarle County and calls upon our students, families, staff, and community to recognize the hard work of our Transportation Department for all they contribute to the safety and well-being of our students. Signed the 13th day of February, 2025. Dr. Kate Akoff.
Thank you, Dr. Berlin.
Dr. Akoff, I've been asked to ask the board that on February 20th, it is Wear Yellow for Love the Bus Month, and that just so happens to be a school board meeting date, so they're asking the board if perhaps they would wear something yellow that day, so.
Can you send us a reminder?
I was just going to say the same thing. Thank you. Ms. Lee?
I have a resolution of appreciation for Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Albemarle County School Board. Whereas the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors has designated the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week to recognize the invaluable contributions of school board clerks across the Commonwealth, and whereas school board clerks play an essential role in ensuring the smooth and effective governance of our public schools by maintaining accurate records, preparing board materials, managing communications, and providing critical support to the school board members and superintendents, and whereas the Albemarle County School Board relies on the professionalism, dedication, and organizational expertise of its clerk Christine Thompson, whose commitment to excellence upholds transparency, efficiency, and integrity in school board operations, and whereas Christine Thompson exemplifies outstanding service through her meticulous record-keeping, responsiveness to board members, and steadfast support of Albemarle County Public Schools, ensuring that all business of the board is conducted effectively and in accordance with state and local policies, and whereas her efforts behind the scenes help advance the mission of public education in Albemarle County by facilitating informed decision-making, fostering public trust, and supporting the collaboration of school division leadership, now therefore be it resolved that the Albemarle County School Board hereby expresses its deep appreciation to Christine Thompson for her dedication, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to the students, educators, and community of Albemarle County, and be it further resolved that the school board encourages all members of our community to join in recognizing the vital role that school board clerks play in ensuring the success of public education in Virginia. Signed on this day, February 13th, 2025.
Thank you, Christine, for making our lives so much easier in doing this important work. And I think next on the agenda is Ms. Spillman.
Thank you. Last week, I made a public statement on my social media in support of our transgender and anti-racism policies, and since then, the board has supported that statement and asked me to read it on behalf of all of us. "We, the Albemarle County School Board, stand firm in our commitment to building a school system that reflects the values of equity, inclusivity, and respect for all students. Our district's anti-racism and transgender policies are grounded in the belief that every student deserves a safe, supportive, and nurturing environment to learn and grow. We will not be deterred by attempts to mischaracterize our efforts as indoctrination. Our goal is not to impose any particular set of beliefs, but rather to ensure that all students are treated with dignity regardless of their race, gender identity, or background. We embrace diversity because it enriches our community, fosters empathy, and prepares our students for a world that is increasingly interconnected. Albemarle County Public Schools will continue to work towards a future where every student, whether they are Black, Indigenous, people of color, LGBTQ+, or from any other background, feels seen, heard, and valued. We will protect and uphold their right to learn in an environment free from discrimination, bias, or fear. We will continue to be a district that stands against hate, violence, and exclusion in any form. Our commitment to anti-racism and transgender policies will remain unwavering, and we will always advocate for the well-being of our students, ensuring that our schools are spaces of safety, respect, and opportunity for all. Thank you for your continued support as we work toward a more inclusive and just educational experience for every member of our community."
Thank you, Ms. Spillman. The next.
Do we need to vote on that to move it forward into a resolution?
I think you have to make a motion.
Can I make a motion to formally adopt that?
You may do so.
I would like to make a motion to formally adopt Ms. Spillman's statement today, on February 13th, as a statement made by the board.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I make a statement real quick?
I'm sorry. Sure, sure.
At Monticello High School, students have taken initiative to address ongoing issues with our bathrooms. Right now, many of our stalls have broken locks, and we're lacking necessities like soap and paper towel dispensers. This isn't just a matter of convenience, it's about privacy and sanitation. In response, students have been taking, have been working to fix these issues by installing new locks and adding more soap and paper towel dispensers. This is a great example of students stepping up to make real improvements in their environment. Across the county, student clubs are also making a difference. At Albemarle High School, the Black Student Union started off the Black History Month with an event during lunch on February 3rd, and they hosted Jihamba dancers during Patriot Period. Yapika's celebrating cultural diversity with a Lunar New Year potluck. The Student Center has been working on a proposal to expand the use of pocket talk translation devices in other schools, including Monticello, Western Albemarle, and Community Lab School, to help bridge barriers, to help bridge language barriers, and support multilingual students. In the STEM, in the world of STEM, Albemarle's robotics team is sending two teams to the state competition at Science Olympiad, and will be competing at regionals this weekend. These examples showcase the dedication and leadership of students across our schools, whether it's improving facilities, facilities, celebrating diversity, or advancing academic and extracurricular opportunities. We are committed to making a positive impact. Thank you for your time and support in helping us create the best possible environment for all students.
Thank you. You weren't here for the roll call, so will you just introduce yourself to anyone who's listening at home?
Musa Ahmed, senior, Monticello High School.
Thank you.
Chair Akoff, we just have a couple items of business before.
Perfect.
First, we're gonna reignite Josh's role as handing out certificates to the board. This is a certificate of recognition from the governor's office in recognition of School Board Appreciation Month. So whereas school board members are elected or appointed to represent the interests of students, teachers, parents, and other stakeholders, and whereas school board members play a vital role in ensuring that students across the Commonwealth have access to high-quality, rigorous education and are best positioned to uphold educational excellence in Virginia's schools, and whereas school boards are the governing bodies responsible for the oversight, success, transparency, effectiveness, and outcome of school systems across the Commonwealth, and whereas local school board members work for their communities' parents, businesses, education professionals, and other community members to execute a shared vision of success for students, and whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children and chart a path to prepare all students to be productive workers in the Virginia economy, informed and engaged citizens in our pluralistic democracy, and responsible and good neighbors in our communities, and whereas School Board Appreciation Month acknowledges the contributions, dedication, and service of Virginia's local school board members. Now therefore, I, Glenn Youngkin, do hereby recognize February 25th as School Board Appreciation Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. So Josh, we'd like to hand you your certificates. Please proceed.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Whereas is really working hard tonight. Therefore, also doing some work.
It's back to my MUN days.
Excellent work, Mr. Black. Thank you. And then we just have a quick, a very quick business update that has no wheres. We just want to give a brief update on our use of inclement weather days and what our plans are moving forward. Dr. Kaiser's gonna do that.
Good evening, Chair Akoff, Vice Chair Berlin, and members of the school board. As we continue to track the weather, there remains a possibility of additional school closures due to inclement conditions. Tonight, I want to provide an update on where we stand with our instructional hours, how recent closures have impacted our bank time, and what steps we may need to take if more closures occur. Virginia state law requires school divisions to provide 990 instructional hours, or the equivalent of 180 school days each academic year. And if you're just looking at hours, each school day equates to six teaching hours. If a district falls below this threshold, we have a few options to make up time, including adding instructional days to the calendar or extending the school day. At the start of the school year, we had 66 surplus instructional hours available. However, after accounting for the flooding events in late September and early October, along with the two recent snow-related events, closures, we have used 55 of those hours, including six hours we regained by having a workday on January the 17th. As of today, February the 13th, we have 11 banked hours remaining above the state mandated 990-hour requirement. Right now, we have enough time to absorb one more full-day closure without going below the required instructional hours. However, if we have two or more additional closures, we will need to implement makeup days to remain in compliance. If additional closures occur, we are prepared to adjust our calendar by converting the following non-instructional days into regular school days. Monday, April the 28th, we would convert from a professional development day to an instructional day. Monday, March the 17th, convert from a professional development day to an instructional day. And Friday, March 28th, convert from a teacher workday to an instructional day. If closures extend beyond the available makeup days, we may need to explore other options, including temporarily extending the length of the school day, extending the school year, applying for a waiver from the Virginia Board of Education in the event of a prolonged closure due to extreme weather. At this point, we have some flexibility, but another two or more closures would require us to use designated makeup days. We will continue to monitor the situation closely and provide timely updates to our students, families, and staff. And thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Just a super logistical question. So if it's a two-hour delay, does that count as two hours of that time, or does that not count in that counting time?
So so far this year, we've, we have nine full days. We have two two-hour delays that we've had and one one-hour delay. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Patrick, the two-hour delays are...
That's right. So we count hour for hour, because we're using 990 hours for the school year. So today took two of those hours away from us. The previous day took six as a full day.
I mean, one of the things we'll just have to think about is, I know those PD days that would switch to instructional, and again, I know we have to follow the rules, but those are days I believe are designated for teachers to work on their letters training for part of those days, maybe? You'd have to go back and look at those, so just something to think about, because I know that's important for the teachers, but also that we need time, so we'll have to figure out a plan if we have to move those to instructional days, how to support those teachers with that training.
And we hope we won't have to do that.
Dr. Kaiser, thanks very much for the update. The...
They're not in chronological order, so I was just wondering if those dates have like an order of preference or something for return?
Yes. So the order would be Monday, April the 28th, that would be the first day. Then the March 17th date. And lastly would be the March 28th. And that's the day, the day before spring break.
Yep, we have flights on those days.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Kaiser.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser.
Next on the agenda is public comment. And I believe that's Ms. Osborne.
We welcome public input at our school board meetings. To sign up to speak during the public comment period, you can do so in several ways. Online, sign up is available from 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 2:00 p.m. on the meeting day. By phone, call the school board clerk's office to sign up until 2:00 p.m. on the meeting day. Or you can sign up in person at the meeting. That's available from 6:00 p.m. until the public comment period starts, which is right now. Please note that public comment is not received at special board meetings unless specified on the agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, but the chair, with board consent, may reduce this to two minutes should there be 14 or more speakers. The maximum number of people or groups that may speak at a meeting is 20. In the event that there are more than 20 people or groups who wish to speak at a particular meeting, each speaker will be assigned a number, and numbers will be drawn to determine which people or groups will have the opportunity to speak. Those who do not have the opportunity to speak at a particular meeting may sign up to speak at a subsequent meeting and/or may submit written comments to the school board's, for the school board's consideration. Speakers should do the following. Say your name and either your address or your voting district. Address your comments to the whole, to the whole school board. Limit your comments to school board governance or school division operations. Provide written statements and supporting material to the clerk. The school board will use a timer to track each person's time. Speakers are asked to wrap up their comments by the end of the three-minute mark. To maintain respect, please refrain from clapping or other audible forms of support. You may raise your hand instead. And debate with the school board is not allowed. And the projection system is for staff presentations only. Tonight, we have two speakers, Jim Dillonbeck and Chris Dilbeck. Mr. Dillonbeck, you are first.
Good evening, Chair Acuff, other members of the board, Dr. Haas. My name is Jim Dillonbeck, and I'm in the Rio District. And first want to say compliments to Dr. Haas and your staff for the good call on the weather this morning. That may be one of the most difficult parts of your job. I want to tell you this evening about a conversation that I had yesterday with a neighbor while we were out shoveling snow. He said that he and his wife, who have three kids, have decided to pull their fourth-grade son out of Woodbrook Elementary School and send him to a private school. They made this difficult decision because he was falling further behind and the staff is completely overwhelmed by and focused on the large number of ELL students, most of whom are failing the SOLs. Sadly, I heard the same thing from numerous parents as I campaigned in the Rio District last year. In addition, there are a number of teachers who have left county schools because of the difficult conditions and lack of support from their perspective. These are disturbing trends. I'd like to also, since you all are in the middle of the budget season, implore you to consider a few items as you take a look at the budget for the coming year. First and foremost, I would like to encourage you to spend more money on teachers and less money on central office staff. At the risk of stepping on toes, based on the payroll information that I received, I want to point out that in the H R department, for example, there are 29 staff members with a budget of $2.4 million. In the technology department, there are 28 staff members and $2.8 million. In the building and service, building services department, there are 62 staff and $3.7 million. And there's a teacher at Woodbrook Elementary School who has in her class 14 ELL students and one deaf student. So she spent some time this week speaking Spanish and signing at the same time, and she's paid approximately $60,000. That, to me, seems to be a disparity. Number two, I would like to encourage you all to fully fund school resource officers for all of the high schools in the county and hire and train more safety coaches for all middle schools in the county. I'd like to encourage you to check in on the events at Burley Middle School from last week. And number three, I'd like you to plan for a fourth high school in the near future. Admiral High School has been overcrowded for 30 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dillonbeck. Now we have Chris Dilbeck.
Hey, all. I'm Chris Dilbeck. I graduated Admiral High School in 2005. I went on to form a career in identity and access management, computer architecture. I had a great experience at Admiral High School and got an excellent education there. And I wanted to thank Dr. Haas for his services there as principal when I was there in 2005. I wanted to address the topic of snow days. One of the, an experience that I would describe as mythical and grand is the one where you run down the stairs in the morning, and you look out the window as a young kid, and you see it snowing, and you run right to the couch, and you look for the little ticker on the end of the, of the news to see if school is closed for the day. I remember snow days as days of fun, freedom, family, and running around the neighborhood with a roving band of kids from my neighborhood. So I would like to say that I'd urge the school board to, when it's icy, like it was on Thursday of the last closing, or it's close, go ahead and close the schools because many of the kids out there are having an enlightening experience at home with their families and friends. And many of them are making memories that they will cherish their entire lives, like I have. So thank you, and I yield back.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lee, a second by Mr. Page. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is accepted. School Division Business, the first item is Dr. McLaughlin and an overview of the VA School Performance and Support Framework. And there he is, right in front of me.
Good evening, Dr. Acuff and the rest of the board. Thank you. My name is Pat McLaughlin, excuse me, Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Planning. And it is my pleasure tonight to bring you an update on the Virginia School Performance and Support Framework. The reason we're doing this tonight is really as a prelude to a report you're going to get next month around some of our mid-year updates. We have staff who are going to come to the meeting next month to give you an idea of how we judge our progress throughout the year and understand whether or not we are on track to meet our goals. This aligns most closely with our thriving students goal. And I'll start by looking at our current state of accreditation. I've stood before you all many times and talked through how the former system worked. And if you recall, it was one that was relatively straightforward. We had, schools were judged on academic achievement for all students in the areas of English, mathematics, and science. They had a certain threshold to meet, and they received a level of level one, level two, or level three. They also were judged on their achievement in math and science for their achievement gap groups. Each group was looked at individually, and then they were collectively given a score for that of level one, two, or three. And then finally, schools were given a score for chronic absenteeism. If any of those categories landed at a level three for the year, then the school was considered accredited with conditions, and they had to work with the state to write a school improvement plan and participate in some state monitoring. High schools had three additional elements in here that focused on graduation and readiness for life after high school. So all those things that we've talked about for years, take them and throw them out the window because we've got a totally new system that is, that is going to be in place starting for next year's accreditation year, which is based on performance from this school year, the 24, 25 school year. And that's what I'd like to go through with you tonight. We've known for about a year, maybe even more than a year, that the system was going to change. But we've been given just kind of bits and pieces of information until recently about what those changes meant. The first piece of information that came out were these percentages, where the state came out and said this new system is going to look at elementary schools, and they're going to be judged, 65% of their accreditation score, their accountability score is going to be from mastery. 25% is going to be from growth, and 10% is going to be from readiness. Middle schools had 60% mastery, 20% growth, 20% readiness. And high schools had 50% mastery, 15% graduation rates, and 35% readiness. And while that was nice and gave us a start to understand what, what that was, we didn't really understand how those broke down or what any of those really meant because they, as you'll see tonight, they mean something quite different from what we were used to. The next piece of information that came out was a breakdown of those categories, where they said, okay, when we look at mastery, here's what we really mean. And if you look on here, you can see the breakdowns for each of our classifications of schools. In elementary school, mastery is going to use four components. There are reading, math, science, reading, math, and science SOL tests, and also progress that students make on their WEDA tests for students who are English language learners. And you can see that each of those has a specific percentage that it makes up of that 65%. So reading counts 22.5%, math counts 22.5%, science 10%, and WEDA progress, or progress in English language proficiency, counts 10% to give us that 65. Think of this as the teacher grade book, right? Where tests used to count a certain percentage, and quizzes counted a certain percentage, and homework counted a certain percentage, and you took all of those things at the end of the year, and you plugged them into a formula, and it spit out a final score for you. That's what this system is going to do for us. So they showed us that breakdown, that growth at the elementary school was going to be 12.5% each for reading growth and math growth. And then they've got a category called readiness, which incorporates chronic absenteeism and something called a five Cs, performance task. At the middle school, you can see that that mastery category is made up, it looks very similar, but with slightly different percentages there. Same thing for growth. And the readiness category adds in a category for advanced coursework. And then finally, when we look at our high schools, we have similar mastery categories. Graduation replaces the growth category, and readiness has different components at the high school level than it does at the elementary school level. And I'll go into a little bit of detail about what all of those are tonight. But if you look across that continuum, you can see that it switches from a higher emphasis on mastery for our elementary school students to a higher emphasis on readiness for our high school students. The thinking there is that we, you know, that at the elementary school, it's more important to start to get those basics. And by the time you finish high school, it's more important to be ready for, for life, for employment, for enlistment, for enrollment in a, in a new institution. Even when we had those percentages, we weren't quite sure how those percentages were going to be calculated. And that is the, kind of the final piece of information that has come out to us from the state, and that's what we'll spend much of our time on tonight. So the first part I'd like to walk you through is, whoops, are the mastery calculations for our elementary, middle, and high schools. At elementary schools, the tests that are used to, for mastery in reading are three SOL tests, our third, fourth, and fifth grade reading tests. In math, that is the third, fourth, and fifth grade math test. And in science, it is the grade-five science test. In middle school, the six through eight reading are used for mastery, six through eight math, plus Algebra I and geometry, which we have many students take at the middle school level, and their eighth-grade science class. One quick note, where it gets even a little bit more complex before we go into the high schools. These scores are for students who take the test in the current year. So a third grader who takes the test this year, that third grade test is going to come into the elementary reading score. A sixth grader who takes a sixth grade math test, that score is going to come into that middle school math score. And I point that out because at the high school, it's different. When we look at the high school, kids in high school take all kinds of different tests depending on what grade they're in, what they've taken already when they were in middle school. So it's not as consistent as it is in elementary and middle schools. So the one piece that's most consistent at the high school is the end-of-course reading test. Every student takes that. It's a requirement to get a verified credit to graduate. And so that test, that generally is taken in 11th grade, is, counts 15% of mastery. Kids take all kinds of different math tests at different times. And in fact, kids are only required to take one math test and get one verified credit. And once they've earned that verified credit and taken a math test at the high school, they don't have to take another SOL test. And so for some kids, that's Algebra II. For some kids, that's Algebra I. For some kids, that's geometry. So what counts in these calculations is whatever test generally they take first. There's a federal requirement that all students take one, at least one standardized math test when they are in high school, and that first one goes into the mix for calculations. And then finally, with science, the only test that counts is when they take biology. All students are required to take biology as an SOL when they're in high school, and that counts 10% of their score. What is really different about high schools compared to our elementary and middle schools is that we use cohort graduation results for this calculation, which means that when we're calculating these results this year, it's based on the graduating class of 2025. So for their math test, we're looking back to their ninth grade year generally and to see what math test they took. We're looking back to whatever year they took biology, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, to take that. And generally, we're looking back to their 11th grade year to find their reading test. So a lot of the mastery component at our high schools is already in the books. These kids have already taken those tests, and it's not going to, nothing's going to shift with those, you know, with our new students who are coming in, taking this year's tests, we generally won't see those reflected for, for about three or four years in this, in these components. So when students take those tests, they get one of four levels of performance on the SOL. They can get a pass advanced, they can get a pass proficient, they can get a fail basic or does not meet, and they can get fail below basic. For each one of those levels, they get a different point value assigned to them. So if you pass advanced, you get 1.25 points. If you pass at the proficient level, you get one point. If you pass, if you fail at the basic level, you get .75 points. And if you fail at the below basic level, you get .25 points. And it's important to point out that at the high school level, none of the, what we call the end-of-course tests, have a below basic category, nor do our Algebra I, our geometry, or our science tests in elementary and middle school. So the lowest performance, that's why they have one called does not meet instead of below basic and basic that are there. The final component of mastery is WEDA testing. That's a test that we give to all of our English language learners, and they take that in the spring of every year. And it, that is kind of a pass-or-fail test for purposes of accreditation calculations. That if students meet their WEDA growth target, which is established after they've taken the test once, then they get one point for that. If they fail to meet that, say going from fourth grade to fifth grade, then they get zero points for that. This is a category that spans all grade levels from K through 12 for all of our students who take the WEDA test and have taken it at least once before in the state of Virginia. And so what really made this make sense to me was seeing the numbers at work. And so I'm going to take you through a quick representation of some of our, of one of our schools. schools. One of the things that the state of Virginia did for us this year is they said, we're going to pretend as if this system were in place at the start of this year, and we're going to give you model data so that you can see how your schools would be doing on the new system. So tonight, I picked Burley Middle School to show you the model data that we have there. So the first indicator that we have is reading performance, and at Burley, they had 93 students who passed at the advanced level. They had 270 students who passed reading at the proficient level, 124 students who passed at the basic level, and 47 who were below basic. And so when those come in and we give 1.25 points to the advanced passes, one point to the proficient passes, on down the line till we get to below basic, the rate for those kids is about 91.9. Think of that on a hundred point scale, right? Kind of perfect is 100. Technically, you could get 125 on this because if every kid passed, passed advanced, your score here would be 125. That's the number that will be multiplied by 20% to get the final score when you take that, that 91.9. When you look at Burley's math performance, they had 82 students who passed advanced, they had 251 at the proficient level, they had 145 at the basic level, and they had 63 below basic that gave them about an 88, a score of about 88 there. And then finally, when we look at their science performance, they had 11 students who were past advanced, 92 who passed proficient, and 73 who in this category is called did not meet because there's no delineation between basic and below basic. So that gave them a score there of about 91. Couple of things to point out here that I think are interesting. The impact of below basic is, is pretty significant. When you look at our reading performance, if you just did the math, pass, fail, the reading performance at Burley last year was 68% pass rate. When you look at science, it was significantly lower, 59% pass rate there. But when you look at their scores that are used for the calculation, they're almost the same, even though the pass rate was lower. And so the, one of the things that you'll see here is the impact of science is much less significant than it has been in the past. It used to be that if you had a, you know, below 70% of your students passing science, you are automatically kicked to accreditation with conditions. Here, even if every single student in the school failed a science test, the most impact it could have on that 100 point scale is two and a half points because even a fail gets .75 of that one point that's in there. Below basic really has a, a big impact, and in many ways, that's good, right? We used to just look above the bar, below the bar with our tests. And now, below basic, really by even just moving kids up to a, a basic fail, that gives them three times the credit that they would have gotten. I think that's positive in some ways because those are our neediest students, the students who are performing at significantly lower levels than the state would like them to be. And then the, the final piece that goes into our mastery component is EL student progress on the WEDA test. Last year, 23 out of 60 students at Burley made progress on the WEDA that was there. So that gave them about a, close to a 40% pass rate on there. All of those things, when calculated together, give you a mastery value of 49, and that counts 20, 40, 50, 60% of, of the mastery component. So we'll come back to this. And again, keep in mind that, that 100 point scale. And please, I know I go fast sometimes, stop me whenever you want, I'm happy to take questions if something doesn't make sense. Yep?
Remind me, are they also making a change to when our English learning language students will be taking the test? Isn't there also a change, the SOLs?
So, so, yes and no. So they've, they've, they've always taken the test, but it hasn't counted for accreditation purposes. And that is very different. And so it used to be that you had an 11 semester exemption as an English learner. That has come down to a three semester exemption. So in other words, I had to be here over five years for my scores to, to be included in the accreditation calculations. Now, basically, by the end of your second year, those scores come in. And, and they come in for, in a number of ways. They come into reading, they come into math, they come into science, they come into the WEDA progress, and they also are calculated at the elementary and the middle school level into the growth side of things. So that is a pretty significant change.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. So, the next piece is growth, and we've talked about growth in the division for a long time. And what we used to mean when we talked about growth was, we had these ranges for SOL scores, right? And we would say, and there were four ranges that were kind of below the bar and four ranges that were kind of above the bar. And if you were below the bar and you were in range number one, if you the next year moved to range number two or range number three, you would count as a pass, as what we call a growth pass for, for purposes of accreditation. Growth now means something totally different. There is a, a new system that the state has adopted that we call VIVAS. It's the Virginia Visualization and Analytics Solution. And basically what VIVAS does is at the end of the year, when all of the tests are done, they take all of that data and they dump it into, who knows, some big spreadsheet somewhere, and they spit out for every grade level test, a big normal curve, right? And they say, okay, this student scored a 420, and so that's going to put them at the 65th percentile on that curve. And this student scored a 380, that's going to put them at the 48th percentile on that curve. But it, but it is a normal curve, there's always going to be someone at the low end, there's always going to be someone at the high end for that. And based on that, in, in combination with all of the other SOL tests that that student has taken, they determine a level of growth that that student should meet for the next year. So it doesn't really tie into a specific score. We don't think we're going to get something that says student A should get a 430 and student B should get a 450 because it all comes back to percentiles, and you can't calculate the percentiles until everybody's done with the test. And so growth, we're not going to, that's the, this is the, the hardest part of the new system for us to be able to model because it's going to come to us so late in the game. But basically, the state has said, when you, using that system, they've set up a model, whoops, I didn't mean to hit that. They've set up a model that's very similar to mastery. They've said if you exceed your growth target, we're going to give you 1.25 points for that when we're calculating growth. If you hit your growth target, we're going to give you one point. If you are, if you grew but you didn't quite hit the target, we're going to give you .5 points, and if you don't grow at all, we're going to give you zero points. And so they take that, and sometime in September, we get a report that says, here's the number of kids who exceeded their growth, who met their growth, who grew, and then who didn't grow. And that equates to 12 and a half percent of the score for reading and math at the elementary level, and 10% of the score for students at the middle school level. And we'll pop those numbers in for Burley as well, just to see what this looks like. So at Burley last year, in reading growth, the school earned 400.5 points out of a possible 499, right? That 499 is roughly the number of, of students who took a test. And to, to get full credit, you would want to get one point for every one of those students. Ms. Lee, it looked like you had a question.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I understand the normal curve, but like, how is growth determined from where people are in that?
So, so they've, they look at all the kids in the state who landed in the same place. They, quite frankly, I'm not quite sure how they get the, the second piece, but they use that in conjunction with, if this student scored a 460 this year, and last year he scored this, and last year he scored that, and last year he scored that, and there's other students who look like that, they make a determination as to where they think that student should be.
Like comparative percentiles, kind of?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's, but sometimes you could be in a lower percentile, you might be in the 60th percentile one year and be in the 58th percentile, but they've determined that still shows growth because of the, the different difficulties on tests and things like that. Very, probably the, the hardest part of this to understand, and quite frankly, I'm still not quite clear how it, how, how they determine that number. They've got an algorithm somewhere that, that pumps it out for them. And so in math, at Burley last year, they had 386 growth points out of 498 students. And so when you look at that, they got about 15 out of the possible 20 points for growth. And again, you could, in theory, have above 20 there, you could score over 100 if everybody exceeded their growth total. And then the last piece that we'll get to is readiness. And so readiness at all schools involves chronic absenteeism as one component, and chronic absenteeism is defined as missing more, 10% or more of the school year during the course of the year. Chronic absenteeism counts 10% for elementary schools and middle schools, and 5% for high schools. Chronic absenteeism is just either you're chronically absent or you're not. You get, it's kind of, we take, they take an inverse, right? So they take the number of kids who were chronically absent divided by the number of kids in the school, and they give you the, kind of the opposite, the, you know, if you have 7% chronic absenteeism, you get like 93 points for that. The second piece of readiness applies only to middle schools, and that's something called advanced coursework. This was something we had lots of questions about as it was coming in there, and it went through several iterations before they finally landed on this definition of advanced coursework. Advanced coursework for purposes of the performance framework is defined as any student at the middle school who's enrolled in a high school end of course test. For us, that's primarily Algebra I and geometry. And, and they all go into the numerator, I'm sorry. Any student who passes the end of course test goes into the numerator. The denominator is any student who's enrolled in one of those courses that's there. Plus, one exception. If there's a student who took a math seven test and passed at the advanced level but did not go on to Algebra I, then they're going to include them in the denominator too. Because the state says, that's an indicator that you should be in Algebra I if you pass at the advanced level. And we're going to, and if you, and if school system didn't put the student in there, we're going to count them in that number anyway. We have, I think, single digits, if any, students who fit that description. And then that counts as your total score. So basically, it's what percentage of your kids passed Algebra and geometry counts as your advanced coursework for the readiness portion. In future years, at middle, at middle and elementary school, there's going to be something called the five Cs performance tasks. We don't know what, exactly when they're going to come, they may be as soon as next year, but they may be longer than that. When those do come, they're going to pull some of that chronic absenteeism and readiness number back and add it into this category with the five Cs. So those will be about between 5 and 10% once they start going on. Because those don't exist yet, that percentage has shifted to the, to the other categories. And then we've got high schools where it gets, it gets more, much more complex. There's a couple of indicators for, for high school. One is one we had never really seen before, they call it a six-year federal graduation indicator. And to, to look at this six-year graduation indicator for this year, we would have to go back to the class of 2023 because that's the class that have been, your cohort year starts when you begin ninth grade. And so they look six years out from when that cohort started ninth grade and see what the graduation percentage is there. Generally does not shift too much from the four-year graduation percentage, but this does give students, particularly some of our students with IEPs, a chance to, to have some extra time to get a, to get their diploma and get some credit for that. But what we'll see is that they, they're not too different from each other. The, the biggest piece of the high school that is the most different for us is what we call the, the three Es. And the high schools say, you know, their kind of primary readiness indicator says, we want students to be ready for one of these three things, enrollment, employment, or enlistment. Not necessarily all three, if they are ready for all three, all the better. But the goal is to get like full credit for this, is getting every student to have one point in one of these areas. So I don't have to get an enrollment point, an employment point, and an enlistment point to, in order for my school to, to get a high score for this. So what do all those things mean? Well, enrollment looks at courses that kids take. And earning an associate's degree, like we have some students do over at Monticello in particular, in our early college scholars program, earns that student 1.25 points. Taking three or more credit bearing college ready, I'm sorry, taking three or more credit bearing college ready classes and getting college ready scores on their exam, which is a three or more in, you know, on an AP test, gets a student one point, or if they get an early college scholar certificate. If they take one or two of those courses, AP, IB, those kinds of things, or they pass one or two dual credit courses with a minimum grade of a B, they get .75 points. And if they just complete an AP class, an IB class, or a dual credit course with a grade of C, they get .5 points for that category. In employment, this looks at primarily things like work-based learning and industry credentials. If students are a CTE completer who earns a high, who earns a state-approved industry credential in a high-demand, high-wage field and has participated in work-based learning, they get 1.5 points. One of the questions is, what are the credentials that gets, that are high-demand, high-wage? Our answer is, we don't know yet. We thought we were going to get those by the end of October, and we still don't have a list of what those are just yet. Going down the, the line, you can be a CTE completer who, who earns a recognized industry credential in a high-demand field that is not high-wage, you get 1.25 points if you've also done work-based learning. And you can see down there, the, if you take work-based learning out of the equation, you get fewer points all the way down to .5 points if you just do a credential or you do work-based learning. So anywhere from .5 to 1.5 points for this. And then probably the most straightforward of these is the enlistment portion where you get, if you take the ASVAB test, which is a, a test of, of really aptitude that's primarily used by the military, and you get a score of 65 or higher, you get one point. If you get a score of 50 to 64, you get .75 points, and if you get a score of 31 or higher, you get .5 points. You only need one of those points, if I'm a student, to get one, but a student potentially could get three and a half points. And if I get three points, well, then I can counteract two students who got no points in this system. So it's, so it's, it's, you know, they don't, they, they don't differentiate between, now that you've got one, you can't count for more points that are there. So that's another little quirk of this, of this system that makes it a little bit more challenging to really know where schools are. And then the final component for high schools is their four-year graduation rate that's there, and that counts for 15% of that. So our last look at modeling this, as we go back to Burley, is that Burley, when we look at their readiness score, Burley had 103 students out of 558 who were chronically absent last year. And they had, for advanced coursework, 122 students out of 123 who were enrolled in one of those end of course classes and passed the end of course test. And so all of those get pumped into this system, and Burley ends up with a score of 82.8. So what's that mean? It means they're on track, according to this. The state has created four categories of performance. One is distinguished for 90 points and above, one is on track, 80 to 89 points, 65 to 79 is off track, and below 65 is needs intensive support. And the final piece that I will let you know about is that one of the things that you may have, have caught on to as we went through all of those criteria to get to this score is that none of this takes into account at all whether a student is a, a student of color, whether a student is economically disadvantaged, whether a student is a student who has received special education services. It just lumps everybody together all in one, in one group and says, here's your score. And that, to me, can be very problematic because we know we've got some schools that have a relatively small number of students who fit those categories, who can get hidden by the, by the other students who are high performing. And so because of that, and because the state not only has to meet their state guidelines, but also has to meet federal accountability standards, the state added one more wrinkle into this. And that is these federal performance indicators. And there is one in particular that I'll give you a very brief overview of called targeted support and improvement. And basically, if, if you remember, gosh, way back to the days of No Child Left Behind, the federal government started setting the federal government started setting targets that get increasingly more challenging to hit for reading and math, chronic absenteeism, and those were based on membership groups. So if you were, if your goal was to hit 65% this year, then the next year it was, might have been 67, then 70, all the way up until you get to 100 and No Child Left Behind. Those, iterations of those still exist and those are used to determine if schools get designated for targeted support and improvement. And it's this cascade that the federal government looks at. First, they say, they look at achievement gap group performances. And if you're not meeting the target for your achievement gap groups, then you move on to the next criteria, which is the size of your achievement gap. And if you're in the top half where the gap is relatively small, they kick you out, no targeted support and improvement. If you're in the bottom half where you've got a bigger gap, you keep going. And the next criteria they look at is students passing their WEATA test, who are English learners. I think the target this year is 56% or 54% for that. If you meet that target, kicked out, no targeted support and improvement. If you don't, you keep going. State accreditation used to be one of the things. I don't know if it still will because state accreditation means something totally different now. But basically, if you didn't have any red boxes on that first thing, you couldn't be a targeted support and improvement school. And then the final criteria is chronic absenteeism. They set targets at the federal level for that every year. And if you are below that chronic absenteeism target, I think this year it's 11%, I guess above that chronic absenteeism target, and you've hit all those other things, then you're a school that is deemed in need of targeted support and improvement. If you hit any of those on the, on the correct side, you are not in there. So that's the only real criteria that looks at, at what we used to call our achievement gap groups in the division. And here's why that's important. Because when we go back to this slide, if you are a school that is designated for targeted support and improvement, you get a one-category penalty on this. So if you are on track, so let's take Burley as an example. Burley had a score of 82. If they were designated as a targeted support and improvement school, they would be off-track. Doesn't matter if they were 89 and really close to distinguished or 80.1 and really close to off-track, they move back that one category for that. And so to, to finish up, I'll tell you where we stand with our schools right now. We've got, most of our schools in the distinguished or the on-track category, and we've got three that were in the off-track category, Greer and Journey and Woodbrook. And you can see those scores that they modeled for us in each of those. Now, we had six schools that received the targeted support and improvement designation. So if you look at this, those schools that are coded in red, Journey and Woodbrook, if this were the system that were in place this year, would move to the needs intensive support category. Burley, Agner, Scottsville, and Mountain View would move to the off-track category. So in a nutshell, that's the new performance framework that we've got from the division. I know it was a lot. I know I go kind of fast. Happy to answer questions or just give you time to digest that and, and send questions afterwards would be fine, too. But we wanted to get this in front of you tonight so that you can have that in the back of your mind when you're hearing kind of our academic performance update this time next month.
So many questions and so appreciate the fact that you pushed to do this session because it was, it's so helpful. I'm just curious, like, how many hours, days, weeks have you spent trying to understand this? Because while it's so complicated, it was, you were...
I did not understand it until we got the modeling data and I could do that spreadsheet that was there. And then it started to make sense to us. We've also, but then we've, we've gone around and had individual meetings with each one of our principals and in multiple groups within the division to kind of go through that presentation that you just saw so that everyone's got a clear understanding of where we are.
And the state is not providing any additional funding or data system, or are they to support, not to support the in need yet, but just to do the work?
They, so, no, but the, what, they do provide us data sources that we can pull that data relatively easily and start plugging it in, with the exception of the growth data. We won't get that. So just about all of this, we'll be able to model at the end of the year and say, with the exception of growth, here's where we think our schools are based on preliminary results. We're worried because we don't think we're going to get the growth results until mid to late September.
Right. And then, but the tracking for the things like the, the three Es, that's an additional complication piece that's...
That's right. But we, we already track most of that that's there. ASVAB was one of the, was one of the ones that we were a little, we don't have many students who take the ASVAB through our schools. But when a student goes to a recruiting office and they take the ASVAB through a recruiter, we don't necessarily know about that. And so that's a little bit of a flaw with the system that we may have some kids who aren't getting credit for that because they've done it outside of the school. But most of the work-based learning, the, certainly the, the enrollment and the performance in AP and IB classes, things like that, is relatively easy for the team to...
And then one more question that I'll let, the three Cs, what do they stand for and where would we be even teaching them, or is it too early to even know?
So there's all kinds of iterations of different Cs. They generally talk about creativity and communication and things like that. And I think it's actually five Cs that, that they're, that they've got in, in the performance task. But it's basically, the, I think the, the general idea of it is, let's give a test, some kind of assessment that doesn't look like an SOL, right? That, that looks like a little bit more like real-world work that kids would be asked to do. So I don't think it's a, it's a bad thing that's there, other than, you know, an additional assessment that students, that students have to take. It's just a big unknown for us right now because we haven't seen what it might look like.
And then that will still count that first year, as far as we know?
Maybe. Sometimes it does, sometimes, sometimes they use a year and they equate it and they see, let's, let's just see how this works with kids. And they don't count that in the, in the calculations, but we won't know that until they give us an update.
Thank you.
What motivated all this change? I mean, honestly, I'm just, I'm five years in and I'm just now understanding Pat's math. And now you're giving me different math.
My understanding was that this was designed, that there was some, some feeling that the current system of accreditation and accountability hid the, the truth about what was happening in schools in terms of student performance that was there. And this system was, was, in theory, designed to give a, a more clear picture of where our schools are. And I think in some ways it does that, but I think in other ways, it's quite frankly easier. You know, like, we took a look at that science example. Every single kid in your school could fail science and you could still be a distinguished school in theory. The chances of that happening are pretty slim, but it's, but it's possible.
Right.
Okay, Patrick, you mentioned, I think, either five or six Es. Did you, have they been identified or defined?
So, so yes, things like creativity, collaboration, I'm sure that now that you asked me, off the top of my head, communications. Oh, the Es! Yes, that's enrollment, enlistment, and employment. So our kids going, getting prepared to go to college, our kids getting prepared to go to work, our kids getting prepared to go to the military. And, and the state says, what, those are generally the three tracks that, that a student would take after high school. We want them to be ready for at least one of those when they leave us.
I have what I will probably be an unpopular opinion, but I worry about our higher-achieving students. As we have de-leveled classes and now you have ELA classrooms with, you know, especially in schools like Journey or Burley where you have a very wide range of reading abilities in one class, I worry about those higher-achieving students. We're not going to see as much growth in them because you could have the best teacher in the world, but it's nearly impossible to teach a second-grade reading level and a kid that's reading The Odyssey in the same classroom. And so I'm wondering if we're not going to see as much growth in those students because of our de-leveling and how we can, I don't know, meet the need, you know, if we're, if it's on the, if it's in the name of equity, I guess, is what I'm saying, is that, that doesn't seem super equitable to me. And if we're looking at growth, we're kind of really focused on the bottom half and it seems like we've left the top kind of floundering a little bit.
So, so yes, and I, and I think that, here's one other way to look at it, right? So if we had students who, a 600 is the highest score you can get in an SOL test. And if I got a 600 on my fourth-grade reading test, chances are, I probably could have passed that test when I started in fourth grade, right? And so, and so now, though, those students who get that score of 600 or 590 or 580 or whatever that is, we can count on them still to get to the mastery point that we needed. But now, those still, students still have to hit a growth target. So even if I've got a perfect score, I've got a target set the next year for growth because that was a worry that I think we've had throughout the state, are how do we show, like, value-added for our students? And while I don't have the breakdown in front of me, my guess would be, when you look at those growth numbers and the students who are not making growth, it may be some of those students that you talked about that are there, right? The kids who are already highly achieving and can, can kind of, you know, and might leave at the same level in which they started with us, but that level was so high to begin with, it, you know, they pass up.
And, and, you know, I've heard anecdotes from teachers that, you know, several years ago, you would have several students that got perfect scores and now we're not seeing that same number. So I would love to get some more information. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I think it's something to consider when we're looking at growth. It's not just growth from our under-achieving students, but making sure that, that upper portion are also having their needs met.
Yep.
Thanks.
So Patrick, many of us here on the board are obviously very concerned about equity in our achievement gap groups. When you, so we'll be collecting this data. I know the federal performance indicators do talk about that. So when we're getting data from you in the future, how is that going to look and are we still going to be able to see that?
Yeah, I, I think it's imperative for the board to, to require us to show that data to you because I think that's when you look at our mission. Our mission is really built around making sure kids don't get left behind and making sure that all of our students achieve. So that data is still going to be out there. It's still going to be reported. My assumption is that, like, the Virginia School Quality Profile is going to look very similar to the way it looks right now in terms of, of being able to break down by demographics. I don't know, that is a guess, but I think we need to make an incumbent upon ourselves in Alamo County to keep that at the forefront of, of the work that we're doing. And rely a little bit less on this number and more on, on the, I think we've got, had a very good way of looking at, at performance for, for our students in the past.
Thank you.
I thank you for this, but perhaps like Ms. Osborne, I am yet in the dark about the material benefit of data collected in this way and how that, whether this is an actionable set of data that we can use to improve the education of our kids or if it's, I mean, it looks, well, you said it was in a nutshell, it's a very big nut, but, but, I mean, is this something that we can use in the, in the schools?
I, I think one of, one of the benefits that's here is that we used to just look at above the bar, below the bar for our students, right? And it didn't matter how far below the bar you were. And the fact that the state is incorporating that below basic in a, in a very impactful way, I think, is actionable data for us. And if you look at our schools that, that are performing at the lower end of the, of our scores, you, you're going to see a higher proportion of students in those schools who are performing at the below-basic level. And so in that way, I think that it is. But, but parts of it, right, are, are not going to be as actionable as we would want them to be. But again, that's our responsibility as a school system. And when Dr. Hitt and Mr. Domer come next month and talk to you about how we use data, I think those will be good questions to have for them. How do we, what does it look like to say our kids are making the progress that we want them to make?
So tell, I missed it. When will this data be available year to year? I mean, is it like in the summer?
Probably not until early fall. The, the, the one piece that's really out of our control is the growth data. That gets sent off to, I think there's a company that has nine or 10 states that use this system around it and we've got to wait on them. This year it came, this year was the earliest we've got it, the earliest it was produced, and I think it was the third week of September. So it, it, we won't be able to, I do not anticipate, starting the year, being able to say, here's where we are.
So what if there's a situation where a school really needed something else, but we've already assigned teachers and everything?
That's right. So, well, let me, let me caveat that a little bit. I don't think we'll be able to say, we've got this many schools distinguished and this many schools on track, this many schools who need support. We will be able to say, here's the, the results that students had on these tests and be able to use that to identify schools that, that need additional supports. It'll just be, we won't be able to say, yep, we've got 90% of our schools on, on the right side of the bar and 10% on the, on the side that needs improvement.
So regardless of what the state does, we know internally...
That's right. We get those results, we start crunching them as soon as Chris Gellman becomes the most popular man on the third floor, once those results start coming in, to see where we are.
It also underscores how important it is to deal with chronic absenteeism.
Absolutely.
It affects all of these scores.
Yes.
Are there any more questions? Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin.
And now we have Jackson Zimmerman.
Good evening, Board. Presenting to you the second quarter financial report. I don't have, where do I, okay. I'm sorry, I don't see the, here we go. It's moving without my touching it. Ah, there it is. Presenting for the Board's consideration, the second quarter financial report. Not an enormous change in, from the first quarter financial report. We do have some additional revenues coming in from the state, given the governor's new proposed caboose budget. We are anticipating slightly more state revenues than we had proposed in the first, than we had estimated in the first quarter financial report. Revenues in the other areas remain similar. We do anticipate additional local revenues and asking for those to be appropriated into our budget in this upcoming, upcoming few months. In terms of expenses, we do have greater expenses, as we outlined previously in our first quarter report, greater expenses in health insurance for this upcoming year. We've been making plans regarding those expenses, but a combination of expense reductions in other areas and additional local revenues are likely to help us offset those additional expenses incurred as part of our budget for this current fiscal year. And information is provided for available fund balance at, on the final page of this We do have a very short period for this, this item. If the Board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but there isn't an enormous amount of additional information that would change the financial picture for the Board for this year, between the first and second quarter financial reports.
Any questions?
I move we accept Mr. Zimmerman's report.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Dr. Acuff, was that a second by Dr. Berlin?
Pardon? By Dr. Berlin, yes.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
With that, we have a scheduled break for 10 minutes. People want it? Yes. Let us break. We'll be here, come back at 10 after. We'll be here, come back at 10 after. Good evening, folks. We're back in session. And the first item is the proposed school calendar year for '26, '27, presented by Dr. Eric Arisari.
Board Chair, Dr. Haas, good afternoon. When we last left with the calendar, one of the recommendations that the Board asked for was a second year to the '25, '26 calendar. So we're going to review that this afternoon, or this evening. Again, we followed our strategic plan as our beacon throughout the process. We followed the same guiding principles as before. This is a review, this is the 2025, 2026 calendar that was approved at the last time at the Board meeting. And the 2026, '27 calendar looks almost identical. Some things to consider, the start date is due to the shift in the annual calendar, it starts, school will start on August 12th. It will end on, the last day of school will be the 27th. So that'll be before, I always get these wrong, Memorial Day? Right? Okay, I always get those mixed up. It still has 177 instructional days. It has all of our pre-service, the beginning of year PL days, and it keeps the same numbers as the '25, '26 calendar as well. So it's fairly identical. It just ends, it shifted earlier, so it ends before Memorial Day. And this is just for review for this, for this go-around.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Why we wouldn't, or maybe you're going to address this, why we wouldn't have a spring break from March 29th to April 2nd, which would follow Easter directly for families that travel?
We were at the last, the last discussions we had with our calendar committee and our community stakeholders and to align with Charlottesville City, too, we all agreed to keep it on the first full week of April.
This year, it's like three weeks before Easter, I think.
And again, just specific points here, keep spring break on the first full week of April. Clusters, it still clusters those professional learning and workdays. It maintains the two-week winter break, provides flexibility for schools for fall and spring family conferences. And then there is still consistency between our '25, '26 calendar and Charlottesville City Schools, too, is what the families were asking for.
So going forward, are we basically going to say that spring break will be the first full week of April, just in general?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you for staying and presenting this.
Thank you, Dr. Arisari.
Thank you. And now a report on the Albemarle Employee Care Clinic by Dan Redding.
Is it in this one here? Sorry. On the desktop, all right. I'm going to let you do that.
You're welcome. Oh, God, I want my glasses on. There we go. Which one is it? I can't see.
Farthest over. Perfect.
There you go.
All right.
Next one.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for the technical support. All right. So we're here this evening, school board members and colleagues, to talk about a brand-new benefit for our employees, the Albemarle Employee Care Clinic. We have some great photos for you. We have opened the first of two locations, and this location is on Pan Tops. We actually were able to secure a location that has been a medical provider in the past, required very light construction and updating. And you can see, it's a beautiful, gorgeous space. I always comment to people, it's nicer than my own primary care doctor's office. In the bottom right corner, you can see the work that's being done at our second location, which is on 29 North. That location is right across from the Lowes, really close to Woodbrook Elementary School. Both locations for our clinics were carefully chosen, looking at where our employees work and where they live, so that they would be most convenient to the largest cluster of We have four main topics we're going to talk about tonight. Why we've opened these employee clinics, services they offer, eligibility and fees for use, and time for you to ask some questions. All of this work, of course, is grounded in our strategic plan, aligned tightly with our values of wellness, specifically for our educators and support staff. If we expect them to achieve our mission and our goals, they need access to this kind of a resource for their own health and well-being. And that brings us to the why. Why did we collaborate with county government and with the other entities that are part of our health insurance program to open these clinics? The overarching goal is, of course, to provide resources that enhance the health and well-being of our employees and their families. Aligned with that, we want to remove barriers and ensure equitable access to health and wellness services. If you're new to the area and looking to establish a primary care doctor, a relationship with a primary care doctor, there's doctor's offices that have wait lists of more than a year to get in for that initial appointment. It's very challenging to establish care right now. This, the availability of this clinic for our employees breaks that barrier down, provides that immediate access. And the third bullet is to manage the rising cost of providing health care for our employees. This is one of our key strategies to address the inflation in health care costs that is so much faster than the rate of inflation for other goods and services. Our Pan Tops location opened last Monday. I am thrilled to tell you that in that week last week, they had 50 appointments, 30 of which were for school staff or their eligible dependents. And these are the different services that our employees and their families can access at the Pan Tops location. Primary care services through a nurse practitioner, physical therapy through a doctor of physical therapy, health coaching with a registered dietitian, mental health services from a licensed clinical social worker, and occupational health services such as pre-employment, health screenings, physicals, things like that. By April, we expect our second location to open. So right now, all the services our clinic will offer are centered at Pan Tops, but when the second location opens, they will split and both locations will offer slightly different services. So you can see the breakdown of staffing. We do hope to have a doctor on board for the 29 North Clinic. Additionally, we will add at the 29 North site, two really exciting services. One is an infusion center. A lot of newer groundbreaking medications are to be delivered through infusion, which sometimes requires the patient to go to the hospital or to a doctor's office, which is extremely expensive for a health plan or to the individual patient. We will have the ability to deliver infusion medications to eligible participants through our clinic on 29 North. Huge service to them for convenience and huge cost savings to them and to our health plan. Additionally, the 29 North location will be able to provide prescription medications. So let's say I'm at work, I feel a little feverish, I have a sore throat, I drop by the 29 North Clinic, and the doctor administers a strep test and I turn up positive. The doctor can prescribe antibiotics, and I can pick them up and leave with those antibiotics right there. No delay, no waiting at the pharmacy. I have all my needs met right there. This is a really exciting opportunity. So who gets to use the clinic? All benefits eligible employees of the school division have access to the clinic. We've also listed up there, this is a joint venture with our colleagues in the county government, as well as the Albemarle County Service Authority, the...